Or do we need to make a motion first? Or unless you just go around, how about that? You just go around, Dave, we'll start with David.
I nominated Patricia, so I'm a nay on Julia.
Okay, so. Judith.
I strongly support Julia.
Okay.
Julia.
Julia. Patricia. Patricia. And I'm Patricia as well. So. Right? I just, you know.
Patricia's still on the line?
Yep, is Patricia online? Well, we need to make a motion to accept Patricia's application.
This is the, this is her application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept Patricia to continue Bob Hanko's position until next election.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, but opposed, okay. Alright, motion carries. Alright, so is Patricia on it or no?
She has done hers though.
And she can't sit until she gets sworn in.
Sworn in, she has to get sworn in, yeah.
Hello?
Pat?
Pat?
Yes. I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
You there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
No, no, she's going.
Can you hear me? I can hear you. Hello?
We'll just have to give her a call, I guess.
Yep.
Matter of fact.
Hello, are you there? Anyone there?
Good thing.
Hello?
Um.
Hello?
Fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget discussion. Um, oh, what? Did you have an update? I don't have yet.
Hello? Hello? Is anyone there?
Where did we add election of officers? I know, but where, where?
Right before the budget.
Okay, so it should be now.
Be, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so people should actually hear.
Election of officers.
Election of officers. Alright. Alright, election of officers, so the only three that can hold office is David, Tommy, myself, Patricia unless we want to hold. And then the other gentleman. Um, wanna wait till next meeting?
We should have Paul.
Paul and Patricia.
And Patricia.
Alright, so let's, someone wanted to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table it to the next, to the next week on Paul Hart and Patricia.
You'll say, I'll second that, but. All in favor?
Alright, I have to hear.
Alright, alright. That's tabled. Um, so fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget discussion in April. Um, I know that it was emailed to me, I haven't done anything with it. Um. It's. Is it March or April they're wanting the budget for? April, correct? Sue?
I have no idea.
Okay. It's April. Um.
March 30th? The final four of the commission.
Scott.
March 30th.
Okay. So 30th of March, which means we have next month to do it. I personally, with the COVID, with COVID I should say. Um. Last year and this year potentially we're looking at about eighteen thousand.
I tried to unmute, I couldn't do it.
I think we.
But I'm here.
Use our budget? Like, how much? I don't. But there's definitely not reason.
Scott, I tried to unmute, but I couldn't do it.
Anybody else have any feelings on that?
Yeah, I don't see any great, huge developments coming down the road. Um, maybe half, I don't want to give it all, you know, I don't want to produce it too much, it's quite hard to get the budget.
Scott Anderson.
I know, and I mean, the thing is we can ask for once, if we go over, we can ask for some of the selectmen for more money.
Which we've done in the past.
Yeah. Um.
I tried to unmute and it did not work.
Right.
But I, I can hear you.
I don't know that we need to be that high unless we start really getting into our regs and.
Spend it.
Great.
Um, should be able to cut it by half. I, I would, I, I mean, I'd like to say we could cut it in half. But, I mean, how do you guys feel about it?
I was interested in one of the line, the line item of legal fees.
Okay, what about it?
Um. It's, well, it's, I, I was wondering if that would cover things like zoning enforcement.
It, the legal fees cover like when Pete needs to call, or if we need to call, or if the attorney comes here. When, you've got to understand. You have been in this position. That we have not had an attorney present at the planning and zoning board. When I took this, when I first started, for many years. They did not have, they did not have this meeting without an attorney being present. Okay? So we've cut a lot of attorney fees out. The new attorney is, is also working out really well. Um, the thing is though, if we get a lawsuit, or we get a subdivision, or we get a special permit. We're probably gonna need another attorney here as well. And that's where those fees come in. So I wouldn't want to really reduce that, like, you know. I mean, could we go half? Maybe? That's a line item that, if you use it, you use it, if you don't. So be it, but it's there as.
But it's not at all for, for any kind of enforcement of zoning regulations.
No, no. Not at all. Not at all. It's for Pete, Paul's got issues with, with enforcing that he's declared by stuff. Um, they have sent us a lot of stuff with COVID, they're changing regs and that sort of stuff, but nothing, nothing. Not as far as enforcement per se.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, that. It's not, honestly, it's, it's not having an attorney, we don't need them all the time.
Yeah.
And that was a huge drain on the budget.
Oh, I'm sure.
Um. And the town switched away from him too. Yeah, yeah, the town switched away from him.
Yeah. Alright, so do we want to? You guys want to make a mo, want to make a motion, or you want me to figure something out for half, for next month? And propose it next month, you guys?
I like that, I just like to make sure that we're covering all our bases.
Okay.
You know, as far as the legal.
The lawyer and everything, okay.
And Sue is getting paid from.
See, and I, so I talked to, I did talk to Tracy this morning about that.
Cause that was a bottom of my budget too.
Yeah, so I don't know if she's gonna be coming out, I, Sue, is they, are they gonna? Is what you're doing gonna go against part, they're gonna go against our budget, is that how they're doing it?
Um, that would be the question for Julie and Tracy.
Yeah, so Tracy, Tracy really hit. Along with, we talked about town planner stuff, and she hasn't figured out how she's gonna work that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we need more information from the selectmen then, because it's.
Yeah, I, I think we should just leave that money on there.
Yeah.
Um. I think, I don't know for a fact, but I don't know what's going on. With, the paper stuff was the, what was costing us probably the most money. The notice of decisions, the, um, the ads. For applications, that was, but. You know. That was our biggest probably expense.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see what the, I mean, I think you already asked the, the selectmen, where, where, I'm, I'm, we're fantastic that we have a separate area.
Yeah.
Number one.
Um, and it's within town hall.
It's within town hall.
I mean, we've asked for how many years to last? So. Um. Yes, that's, that's good.
Well, let's make sure that, you know, she's not coming on this budget. That's all I'm saying.
I think, I think like tonight, her hours for tonight are probably. Minutes, probably come out.
Well, we're gonna need to make sure we cover.
Yeah.
We want you to, I want you to stay. Yeah, we need a separate area. Whoever.
So let's take, somebody make a motion to table the budget till next meeting as well.
Make a motion to table the budget next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very. Schedule the meeting, so. I took it upon myself and they got submitted, that stuff has to be submitted, I think. It was either November, December had to be submitted, so I filled it out. It was filled out, same, it's the Wednesday. The, the second Wednesday of every month, seven o'clock, just kept it all the same, the town. Yeah, so there, I just kept it the same, if we change it at this point. Every single meeting this, this year has to be a special meeting. And if we do a special meeting, that means that we can only. Do what is on the agenda and that's it.
Yeah.
So. Um. Are we good with?
Yeah, I, I, we've always had.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so we want to make a motion to approve all that, please?
I'll make a motion. Keep the meetings, the way they're scheduled. Right through 2021?
That's one, yeah, foot into twenty.
Twenty twenty two.
Yeah, it's 2021. Yes.
He's second.
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 Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Alright, aye.
P O C D committee report. Alright, Juliet, you're up.
I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what we've done. Um. Two packets that you have in front of you. One was the survey that, that I didn't have any part in, but I guess we had done several years ago. And shout out to Mark for compiling a lot of the data, and then we put it into a presentation, like I said, there's, that page on top is the replacement of. The page that talks about the challenges. Um, this, this is just. To get an idea of, you know, for me as a planner, to try to figure out what the vision of town is. Obviously, this document was very helpful, I hadn't seen it, you know, right off the bat. But I found it to be interesting, I mean, the, one of the basic struggles that small towns have. Are trying to balance economic development with rural character, and, you know, a lot of people want things to stay the same. Um, but they don't want to pay higher taxes, so that's, that's one of the all-time struggles that, that towns have. Didn't have a lot of response to the survey, but, you know. Good information came out nonetheless, I'd say the major asset. That everybody could agree on was your, the catch-up state forests and your natural resources, people saw as an asset to the town, something to build on with respect to economic development. Um. Isn't surprising. People felt that we had a good school system, and, you know, they moved out here for that quiet, small-town rural feel. As far as the challenges, not a lot going on, not a lot of choices, let's say, to go shopping or entertainment, that sort of thing, and lack of growth, lack of vision and lack of planning. Some of the top challenges identified. Um. There was, there was quite a bit of discussion about town services and some services that were lacking, like elderly services or housing services, or some of the non-government services. Again, that's a budget struggle in many towns as well. So, I mean, I, I printed it out, so you could just have it, it's a little easier way to look at the information. And, and what this should, what you should do with this, is sort of take this when you're thinking about what your vision is, because. One of the things that was missing in your P O C D was a vision statement. So, this committee has been working on trying to come up with a vision statement.
Hit the whole thing.
It's a whole thing.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
I'll save you a minute. Oh, I didn't see that.
Alright, so, so that was one of the first things we did, get that information together, then we went through, each one of us who retained a chapter in the P O C D. Some of the more relevant chapters, chapters that would have some bearing on your zoning regulations. So we, we looked at those sections and we. Uh, that's the other document that's in front of you, and we kind of put them together, not really changing what was in your P O C D. As far as the issues, just sort of clarifying it and coming up with goals and objectives based on that, and then we each added our own suggestions. To that, so, uh, this document you can use to come up with zoning regulation, so as, as we were going through them, we were trying to come up with objectives and actions that could directly translate into a zoning regulation. Because that's the whole idea of doing a P O C D, is then redo your regulation shortly thereafter to support your plan. Wow. So, we, we've done that, we summarized the survey, we reviewed the current zoning regulations and, uh. They, they'll need a lot of work, they, they do need a lot of work, they're kind of pieced together, not flowing from one vision, but. That's okay, because you've just done a new plan, so it's time to redo them anyway, and get them more in line with this, uh, plan. Uh, we reviewed the maps in the P O C D and decided there's probably a few more that would have been useful, um, that hopefully you can get from Neatog. At some point, just getting a better idea of where your farms are, for example, and active farms. Thinking about the zoning maps and the. Why those zones are what they are and what assets you have within those zones. Um, and then we looked at the current and actual land uses on the properties, particularly in those commercial zones, to see how that fits. And we had a small presentation, I think it was just John and Tracy were at that presentation. And then for remaining work, um. We wanted to continue revising these goals and objectives and come up with an overall vision statement. You need to create a future land use map, and that could be something really simple, you know, it could be just focusing on your commercial areas and redrawing the boundaries or deciding. You know, being intentional about what you want where. And then making sure that you have regulations to support that. And then I started in on your regulations to. Be in this packet, but. I mean, I would suggest taking this, digesting it, but I do want to say a couple of things about the regs, some. Some no-no's that I think you should consider, one of the big things is. Define everything, define all of the words that you're gonna use, right? So, so that there's clarity all the time, but within those definitions, don't put any regulations in there, that is not the spot for the regulation. It's just a definition, and then if you need, if you feel you need some regulation for, let's say, assisted living facility or something like that. Then you would put them in supplemental regulations, they wouldn't go in the definition, definitions are just definitions. That was one thing I noticed, and one other glaring thing I noticed is that you don't have any criteria for your special permits, yet everything requires a special permit. I don't. I don't know how you've been able to approve anything without those criteria. Special permits and site plan are very specific, you know, site plan is if you comply with the regulations, you have to approve it. If they don't comply with the regulations, you don't approve it or you, or you condition it, but a special permit is very different. You're saying that overall this use is okay in town, but not on this particular property necessarily, so like. The, like heavy manufacturing in a zone that has a lot of wetlands in it, or a river that runs through it, or something like that. Then yes, that makes sense that it would be a special permit, but you then have to have the applicant justify why they feel that that use is okay on that parcel, and that's what those criteria are for. Uh, so I would encourage looking at other towns or consulting your attorney for. Coming up with those for you. Um, the other thing I say is, uh, don't put anything negative upfront, like, don't start off your regulations with, these uses are all prohibited. That's not a good welcome to anybody looking at your zoning regulations, start out with your vision and your purpose, or purpose and authority, that sort of thing, and put all of the administrative things in the end. And in the beginning of that administrative portion, you can put what's prohibited. Uh. I saw somewhere in there that, that you require public hearings for site plans, that's, that's not wise, because it doesn't matter what the people say. If they comply with the regulations, you have to approve, that's the law. So that just, that just leads people to feel like that their voice wasn't heard, but. For site plan, we don't have. Um, I mean, there's a lot of things in the regs, so as I started going through it, I just, I, I. These aren't something that could be fixed, I would, I would. Wholeheartedly encourage you. To start from the beginning, get your administrative portions in, get your definition portions, you know, start with the easy stuff, figure out what things you don't want in town, and then take a good, hard look at your zones. And what do you want where, what makes sense, what is, what gives you the biggest bang for your buck, I heard something. I was going through our grant list stuff, and, uh, one of our biggest tax generators is the K O A, I'm like, how is that possible, they're no building, you know, what do you mean, that's the high? So campgrounds apparently are a huge tax generator because they have, um. No, uh, utility, uh, electricity and water to every campsite, and that's taxed as equipment or personal property, so. I was like, well, that's, that's it, I didn't know that, you know, and so for a rural town that wants to keep rural, then maybe campground is something you would consider. You know, it's not something that would need water and sewer and whatnot. Um, hotels, multifamily, those are all big tax generators for a smaller footprint. Um. But, you know, figuring out what makes the most sense. Based on your assets, but there's a, there's a big misconception that if you put up four buildings, you know, the tax rate's gonna go down, that, that's not true. It would take so much development to make a mill rate go down, you know, we're talking millions and millions of construction value, and it's, it's, that's, that's a misnomer. Or, you know, misconception, so. For small towns, it really is crucial to take a look at your downtown or your commercial areas, and, and you decide as a planning commission. What's missing, what the townspeople would want, what would make this town vibrant and, uh, for years to come, and, and then make those uses by site plan only. There's no reason for special permits this way, you know, if I were a planner, I would, I would have you go through that exercise of looking at every, every parcel in a particular zone. And have you tell me, what is it about that parcel that you wouldn't want a restaurant? Or that wouldn't make a restaurant appropriate? And if there was some reason that that was the case. Then fine, it can be by special permit, you know, so say like the borough is a, a high traffic or a high. A use that would need a lot of parking, you could see why they may, might want that to be a special permit, but. If it's something like retail or an antique store, these are, there's no reason why they wouldn't be perfectly fine on any, any single lot in this town. And so. I would encourage you to question. Why there's, why you have them as a special permit, what is it about them that it wouldn't be appropriate everywhere? And start getting rid of the easy ones there. So that you're more encouraging to businesses coming in, and you're making it easier to facilitate investment in the town. Um. So, if you have any questions on, on. Or, Judith, if you want to add anything, but.
I think that the commission did a really good job coming up with the issues and objectives and translating what that existing plan was into really concrete goals and objectives. And will give you a good starting point. Yes, I just, I, um, as you know, was appointed the chair of that committee, and. I want to thank Juliet and Mark Simmons, Jack Wester, Jim McBride. The other members of the committee, because they worked very hard, we've met almost monthly for almost a year working on this. And, um, they, they were very committed and, and very eager to make this contribution to the town. So I was, um, just very, very grateful to have such a fine committee to work with. And, um, I just want everybody who's. How, I, I'd like everybody in town to realize that this group has been trying to pull this together.
This is, there was another chapter, it hasn't been tweaked from, um. McBride, Jim McBride, that since, I just haven't put it into the format that I was using for anything else. Like I forgot to have to make a copy of that one, but. Like an acro for math, you don't have, if there's some key maps that would be helpful to have in your regs. And take a, have an attorney take a look at it, like you're a flood, the flood hazard section needs to be updated per the new statute and per the new FEMA. Um, regs, a couple of other things in there that. They're all pretty easy fixes. But the, the real work is gonna come thinking about those, those zones and. What you want in it. And how you can facilitate investment in your town without changing your character. We can focus on some of the other chapters, because there are more town services or education that don't have a correlation to your regulation. But could certainly continue on with them. Well, in, in your pack, when you get to the color part where there's charts, I did take a peek at like. What the differences were, I, I put it into chart form, like, what uses are allowed where, and it's. There are definitely a lot of uses that need to be defined, there are some uses that look like they were added in 2008 but never made it to this list of, of, of uses in the zone, so I'm not really sure where it's allowed. Um. And then there's not much difference between the two zones, like, and one of them, the only difference was private school. Like, you know.
That you don't have this in digital copy that Max and Pete can look at these, do you?
I had put it up there, but then it got put down, so if you can send it back out again.
Okay.
So, you know. Basically, if you're gonna have a zone, if you can have different zones. In a similar area, there's got, there should be a reason why one is slightly unique or different from the other that warrants certain uses, but not others. These, to me, seem very similar, so I don't understand why they have to be two separate zones, it could just be a village commercial zone, it's a small area. Um, and just think about, if, go back to that survey, look at the things that the people said that they would like to see in town and figure out if. They're allowed in those zones and that they're not, allow them to be allowed in that zone by site plan. And take a good look at your hotel regulation, that was, that's bizarre. Like, two rooms per acre, you know, you could have a parcel big enough in the zone that it's allowed in to accommodate, so. That says to me, you don't want a hotel to just take it out, you know, don't even have it in there. Things like that, twenty percent lot coverage for commercial is way too small, you know, won't accommodate parking. So. Gonna take a whole other discussion, lots of work, but I would go over the. The chapters that we did and look at the type of rejectors, and you all need to discuss that ones yourselves as well. And as far as the vision goes. Let's come up with it last time, might have to send that out to you separately, but, um. Unless you have it written down. You had that from last time, that our vision that we were working on?
I, no, I didn't.
And visions can be, you know, it can be one. One sentence, or it could be separated into parts, or some towns have a vision with respect to the environment, a vision with respect to economic development, and they break it out. Uh, or they break it out into themes, like. Livability, sustainability. Livability, sustainability, like and two others. And that's fine. It, it doesn't matter which way you choose to do it, but uh. You should definitely have a vision because that just gets you started and focused. And without it, it's, you know, you, you can tell. And the town doesn't know which direction it's going and then it just keeps adding on, adding on, adding on regulations and that doesn't really work. Okay, here it is. This was from uh, Jack Wessa. Uh, to build the ultimate lifelong inviting community for businesses and entrepreneurs based on the public use of our contract state forests. And our town's rural character that will support diversified growth in the grand list. And you can see this, this is just an example of a, of a future land use map. It can be simple. This is North Stonington, we just identified. You know, uh, growth opportunity areas that we thought would be good, a housing area and uh, open space. To go for a focus on our natural environment as well. So for your vision, I mean, I thought important things for, there's a strong sense of community here, volunteerism. Maybe focus on some leadership and capacity building. You know, to help you get. Achieve your objectives. That's what we got, but this, it's a lot of hard work and. And of course, you have to enforce your regulations, so. Make sure that your regulations are enforceable, like if you say, uh, think that this use can't make any noise. Say like a wedding barn can't, you can't have a certain amount of noise. Well, if your zoning official doesn't work on Saturday when any wedding is going to take place. That's not an enforceable regulation, so you have to go about it another way. And uh, Jack West also wrote a. Just rewrote the section on the history for your P O C D. That's in the separate file that we sent as well.
Was not something that really related to the regs and we tried to bring the things that related to the. Regulations rather than. The whole. Doesn't seem to me that our big priority is any kind of resubmission of a P O C D. The big priority is getting the regulations worked on.
That was, that was the original intent of what was going on. It was to get through the P O C D which needed to be done. And then address the regulations after that. And then you, you guys stepped in kind of at the eleventh hour. And it became a concern back to the P O C D, which we let you guys run.
You can just use this as a word for.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it, it's great that you guys had the drive in initiative. Um, we tried doing this from day one. Uh, there was probably, there was, I know Jack had showed up and there was um. The, the superintendent showed up. Um, Tracy, I believe, came for the first one. And then it was pretty much the board at that point. And then literally after that, it was strictly the board. Nobody decided to come back, nobody. We reached out to rec, we had reached out to some other people, nobody responded at the time. And so that's when we chose to just let um, N E C O G I run with um. Doing the research and coming back with the P O C D.
To make sure that we got it done on time.
To make sure we got it done on times. I'm not saying it's a perfect document by any means. Um, we were up against the timeline and the intention was right after that, we were right in direct. Um, COVID's trying to come along and. Kind of been waiting to see what, what you guys had as a whole for P O C D stuff. My intention still to this day is let's move forward with tracks. I mean, but I do think that the whole thing needs to get scrapped and kind of go on from day one back.
Yeah, the definitions have been atrocious for years. We've had issues with them every time somebody comes in.
Ninety percent of what's in here is stuff that we already knew.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it really is.
And overlapping uses in your.
Absolutely, the maps stink.
The maps are horrible.
Yep, I mean, there's, there's nothing good about it. It's not user friendly at all. And. You know, but that's kind of how it was kind of written before. So um. Today's commission is very much different than six years ago. When I came on six years ago. Nothing. Reg changes were taken, gosh, how long did a reg change take you guys? It was all being done via mail and a courier coming back and forth and it was like. Five years to get one reg change done. Yeah, okay, I went to email and whatnot when I came on and changed a bunch of stuff and things have been able to move forward. Still not a perfect system. But we've been able to change things a lot faster now than we were six years ago. Hopefully we'll change things even faster. But I mean, they do need to be looked at. The question is. So are you done with your report then, pretty much?
For tonight?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, you guys did a lot of work and, and I appreciate it. Does anybody else have anything to say?
No, I need to, I want to review it and read it.
I, I agree with you too.
But I, we do need to go forth with the regulations.
Absolutely. Okay.
That was our plan from the get go.
So why don't we move along to the updated possible changes in the zoning regs in line with the supportive P O C D adopted in twenty twenty. So. My question to you guys is how do you want to move forward with it? Do we want to reach out to N E C O G I to have rewrite? Do we want Juliette to try to rewrite these and pay Juliette?
Rewrite the reg to that.
Rewrite the reg, yes.
I, you have to ask Juliette whether she would have time to do that. Or be interested.
I know it's a ton of, ton of work. It's a ton of work.
I certainly think we need somebody that has.
Correct.
And we weren't impressed with what we got out of.
I, I would, I was. Would very much support not using. There are other options. I would explore every other possibility.
Juliette, would you be interested in rewriting the regs for a fee?
For a fee, yeah.
Could you give us some sort of an estimate of what you think it would be? To do, nothing you have to do great that, can you just get back to us with a figure so I can put it in the budget? Um, I'm comfortable with. Seeing you do a rewrite, but it needs, I, I mean, it's got to be a total rewrite.
Yeah, the only thing that. C C O G I, N E C O G I, both of them had done in the past when doing regulations. I'm sure you would do it too, because I've already seen you did it here.
Yeah.
Is just the old reg and then what it should be or the line way, just to make it easier when perusing that.
Yeah, it could be hard.
I understand.
It's.
Especially structurally, really.
Yeah.
What I did, we did it for North Stones, we strapped ours and started again, so I just did section by section. This was the major change that happened and this is what came out, otherwise you'd never be able to read it, but. Takes a lot of workshops too. You know, I can't just come in as an outsider and say this is what they should be, this.
No, it's obviously all got to come back to the board and get, get our approval and.
Yeah, to overview it and look at it.
But um, I, I mean. We do need to move forward with it. I think, I think the regs, the way that they are. I think during this pandemic, we probably lost out on a lot of, a lot of hours that probably could have been taken care of. Um, I know, I know there's a lot of people that won't come to the ball now because of the. Um, and that, that's not the intentions. Um, we need to try to promote, but with their current reg, you can't. So, but we chose not to do the regs because we were so involved with the P O C D. That, that N E C O G I couldn't rewrite both of those at the same time.
Well, you also don't want to put the cart before the horse. You need to do the P O C D before you do that so that they mesh.
So, I mean, is everybody comfortable with moving forward with the P O S, with the reg, with reg changes at this point?
I, I, I would think everybody would be thrilled with the idea.
Yeah, we need to get that.
Definitely, okay. So could you get back to us for, I mean, I know it's kind of short, but. Um, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, required housing plan. Everybody got that in the packet. I did talk to Tracy. I am not gotten depth with that. But my understanding is that. This has to come from the selectmen.
You or Housing Committee. Did you get the guidebook? That they just published?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not too bad. Look at um. Salisbury, I think it is. There's a few towns that have done them now. They're pretty simple. I mean, they don't, they don't have to be as comprehensive as you're thinking.
Planning for affordability and.
Basically saying what you have, what you've done in the past to try to get more affordable housing and then have a, a clear goal of. If I want to increase our affordable housing by five units or whatever you think.
Yeah, I have just this.
Cause they just came out with that guideline.
So I mean, what do you guys want to do with that? I don't think we have a choice.
I, well, I, the first thing I would like to do is know what, as Juliette said, they asked me, what have we done in the past? And I would have no idea.
So in the past, the affordable housing is the elderly housing. Um, and the, the selectmen have always done the affordable housing stuff. In the past, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
They've always dealt with.
The whole seventies on up.
Yeah, they've always done. Um, and Tracy is writing something for it with, she wants input from us and she wants us to review what she writes. But that was where my understanding of it, where we were going with it.
Even better.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unusual.
That's how it's been dealt with in the past, yeah. Okay, so I think until we talk to someone with Tracy, I think we just need to. Do we table it because for later discussion?
Yeah, if, if this board of selectmen are working on it, then we need to see what they have to say and give our input.
Okay, so someone make motion table. I'll make a motion table.
The only second.
Only houses. All in favor, right? Let's do it too. Okay, discussion of, of possible blight ordinance. I think Pete should be in on this conversation, please.
Probably any other conversation so far.
He's still there?
Yeah, he's here.
Go there.
Hey Pete.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. So I, this is on the agenda. Don't ask me, well. Have you, at one point you were supposed to be doing. Some sort of blight stuff or, or Jack was, or the selectmen. Or an ordinance, did, has any of that either actually put Jack on it?
Is Tracy online?
No, she's not.
Because she was. I asked her about.
Jack?
Yes, I'm here.
I don't know how to make that sound.
Go ahead.
So I know when you were on the board of selectmen, you were working on a blight ordinance with Pete. Where, where does it, where did it stand?
Basically, the only.
Yeah.
As I said, the only information I had is I gave Tracy, we were looking at trying to isolate maybe a zone in the, right in the village district. And not really allocating the whole town to be involved with the blight ordinance. So we're going to set up a district for it. And we have a similar, we had a similar situation in Groundware. We have a district that follows the uh, property maintenance code. And so that's what we're looking at possibly setting up here with an ordinance. Um, I left it with Tracy, but this is all pre-COVID and really it hasn't moved forward since then.
I, I know that uh. We, we started and then it, it got deferred to the town attorney. And uh. You, you, you know more about the details of, that sounds more than what I know. I know I, we spoke about that in our uh, last uh, E D C meeting. Uh, Tracy's input was that they're working on it and that's one of the things that uh, that, that they've recognized they, selectmen have got to do. And that's, that's basically it. Um. But uh. The thinking was is that whatever you do in one area, it's got to basically cover the whole town. Cause you'll have people. In our uproar. How come I have to do it when he doesn't?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's true.
Look, the flip side of that coin is that you have the farmers out there that will throw a fit if you go into their environment. And try to hold them to the same standards if somebody's on a postage stamp lot.
That, that's true. It has to be, yeah, well, that. That has to be looked at and looked at wiggly too. But I know the selectmen are working on that, that Tracy said uh, uh, in the last couple of weeks when we had our last meeting there, that, that's one of the. Things that the selectmen have got to get a handle on.
Okay.
I would, I would say this, the only good thing is if it's set up as an ordinance, then there can be a blight enforcement officer that is assigned and designated through the ordinance.
Correct.
And it doesn't have to be the zoning enforcement officer, it can be anybody they want. To be responsible for it, whoever they designate as the party. In charge of enforcing it.
So you want to keep, Pete, you would rather keep it out of our regs?
Oh yeah. Set it up as an ordinance, let it stay in an ordinance, it's more enforceable that way. Follows a different, a different avenue through courts. It's a whole different ballgame.
Correct. Any other discussion on blight ordinance?
Sounds. Like a big relief. That the selectmen are going to be. And that's what Tracy told me too, they are working on.
That's been, that's been in the works like that for three or four years. Okay. Thank you guys. Uh, old business, no old business, no, there's a ton of correspondence that's probably come through. I have not, today's first day except in town hall. So I couldn't really tell you. There has been some stuff that's come from the attorneys. Just letting us know, you know, some of the new, the, the new stuff that the governor has blessed us with. Um, which leads us to the Z E O report. Pete, you're back on.
Okay, well, you guys might be aware, there's been a pandemic, so it's kind of slowed, slowed down projects around the area quite a bit. We're still waiting on Al Dano to present his material for his retaining wall over there. On the corner of Pendleton and Preston City Row. And other than that, we have another business that was looking at going into. The Riverside Mall. And it's with the Fire Marshal right now, because they're going to, they're looking to do. Some sort of a thrift, thrift shop type situation in there and it's getting into the stacking because there's no sprinkler system. Some sort of a thrift, thrift shop type situation in there and it's getting into the stacking, because there's no sprinkler systems within that building, so it's getting into the stacking and how they're going to be setting up. The shelving, and so it's being reviewed by the fire marshal right now. And then other than that, the commercials been pretty quiet, subdivision requests, there's been a couple of people that have. Kind of pecked around in a couple of properties, but they've never, they haven't come forward with anything tangible. And so other than that, a couple of special exceptions, requests they were looking at for campgrounds and uh resorts. But that hasn't moved forward either, it's just been people kind of questioning and getting information, but nothing to process or bring forward to the board. And then other than that, just residential, some small residential has been pretty much going on. Hasn't been exactly, been a ton of activity.
No. Okay. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome. Good to see everybody on, at least on a little screen.
Alright, um, that moves us to general planning discussion, I mean, anybody have anything?
I got, I got a solo company.
Yeah, plenty of that, right?
How long would your vehicle warranty?
When they want to build a full balance of ten acres, I got it.
Alright, someone wanted to make a motion?
Make a motion to a ground.
Second, all in favor? Alright, alright.